Hi Corinne.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good. Is this the meeting that Commissioner Rivlin will not be attending?
Yes.
Great. Hi Brian.
Hi Maggie.
How's it going? Is it cool in your office over there?
It is. It got really warm today, didn't it?
Yeah, I don't know why. My house heated up.
How are you doing?
Doing great. It's my daughter's fifth birthday.
Oh, it's a big day.
Yeah, so we celebrated and that was fun.
Your daughter?
My middle one, the five-year-old.
Nice.
Yeah.
The baby's what, two now?
She's one and three months.
Yeah, added some time there.
She's a, yeah, hard to sort out time with COVID, I suppose.
Yeah. But she'll probably watch her sisters and do everything fast.
She does, yep.
Yeah. I need to make arrangements with you to get your signature on some of our minutes.
Yeah.
I want to get them imaged. So I'll contact you by email. I'd be happy to drop them by your house and then come get them when you've had a chance to look at them and sign them, whatever would work best for your household, so.
Sure, that'd be great, actually.
I have the address, so I could just do that, but I'll let you know when, so I'll just leave it on the porch.
Perfect. Thank you, Corinne.
My pleasure. In the old days, I used to deliver packets to everybody's door when we were inviting. This is so much easier.
When did that come to an end?
When we started recording, it's only been a few years. Yeah, that was one of my tasks on Packet Day, was to run them over to the porch.
That's funny.
Been a lot of changes through the years.
Yeah, that's good, right?
Yeah, sometimes it's overwhelming, but it's good. Because I've been here, I've been at Campbell for 28 years, so everything I know now is what I've learned there, you know? I'm starting year 29 in July.
Amazing.
Can't believe it.
That's a lot of change.
A lot of change. Most recently with all the different technologies that we've had to change all at once, so.
Yeah.
System and our permitting system and our GIA.
Yeah, Paul was telling me about the permitting system. I mean, actually, that all sounds like good changes.
Yeah, oh definitely. I think it was hard to learn, but it's good now because I can navigate.
Hi Alan, hi Mike.
Hi. Trying to figure out how.
Hi everybody. It took it easy on us on the agenda again, so that's good. Just the one item.
Yeah.
It won't last forever.
Evening everybody. Hey Brian, is the planning department, are you seeing less applications for developments coming through? Or it seems to be quieter last few months.
It's quieter for the bigger projects. We're seeing a lot of small projects. There's a lot of maintenance and improvements, but the big, large commercial projects, a little bit less.
Do you think that's because of the increase in all the lumber prices and things like that?
Yeah, some of that. I mean, some of that was pretty recent, the last few months. Since January, we've really seen an escalation, but you know, some of those projects probably started, maybe slowed down a little bit because of that.
You don't think there's any underlying reason?
Yeah, no, I think right now, the bigger reasoning is probably the fear of retail. We heard with the Prune Yard project, you know, obviously that they wanted to swap the order of their buildings because the retail just isn't, just really isn't a large demand right now. So, you know, going with office commercials is probably better than retail right now, but you know, I think the developer is just trying to game it perfectly.
So Brian, we get this thing with some of the projects that are coming along, I forget what you call it, but we get copied on it. Is there a, it's like, when do we see those projects? Is there like a three-month or six-month delay from when you guys are working on that to when it comes to the planning commission?
Yeah, that's a pretty good estimate of time. It depends on the complexity of the project, but yeah, from the time that you guys get notice that we've got something, it kind of works its way through that application process and they get a complete application. There's some back and forth in the middle of the plans that they submit to us.
Yeah, alright.
That's not unusual. I think three to six months is pretty typical.
I don't think all of those projects actually come to the planning commission either.
But that's correct too. Some of them don't.
Yeah, okay.
I think we're just waiting for Nick Colville, right Corinne?
Yeah, and Adam.
Adam's here. He just showed up.
I don't see him yet. Oh, there's, there, good. The only one I'm anticipating missing is Commissioner Rivlin, and I checked my email just a short time ago.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Adam.
So I have one, two, three, four, five, and I'm missing one. One.
He loves sitting here.
Colville, I think is missing.
Yep, just Commissioner Colville.
He loves his spot. She loves his spot. It just feels like she knows what's going on. She's watching everything. Hearing every bark, watching every passerby. My grandmother's dog used to sit on the couch over and look in the front. Do what's going on, it's been burnt because that person's walking. If I block.
I think we're getting some background discussion on the line.
Can we tell from whom?
No.
We don't want to hear any secrets.
Just know we're live now already, so.
That's the juicy secrets.
Opportuity.
Yeah, recorded on the glories of YouTube.
Well, how much longer should we wait, Corinne? What do you think?
I'll hit start.
Okay. Sounds great. All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for May 11. This regular planning commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act, an executive order N 29-20 issued by the governor. Corinne, can we have a roll call vote, please?
I can. Commissioner Bookbinder?
President.
Commissioner Craig?
Here.
Commissioner Rivlin? Commissioner Rivlin? Oh, I'm sorry. He's the one who's excused this week.
Did you say Zisser?
I did, sir.
I'm here.
And Vice Chair Chin?
Here.
Chair Ostrowski?
Here.
We're missing Commissioner Colville. He'll be here shortly.
Great, thank you, Corinne. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any corrections?
I have a correction. On page four of the minutes, there's, I got like, there was a three-point commentary from me, and one of them says, pointed out that sweet gum trees can be considered potentially dangerous. I don't think I said that because I know nothing about sweet gum trees, so. I'm guessing I did say.
Well, if he falls on your head, it's dangerous.
So maybe you need to delete that.
Page four, you said. Page four, you said?
It's page four and, uh, it's page six of the PDF.
Oh, okay, but it's page four of the minutes itself.
Page four of the minutes, about halfway down, yeah.
Well, I will find it. I'm not finding it right now, but.
Okay, it's, it's, yeah.
That's correct. I'm reading the wrong person's comments there.
We, we can go ahead and take a motion to amend with that change to it.
I've taken it out.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Zissar, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, may I interrupt? Uh, there's one more correction that was brought to my attention by Commissioner Cray, and I had, uh, done a terrible job with the roll call on the, um, motion for the, uh, Llewellyn, I think it was Llewellyn here. And, um, so I have corrected that. We had two noes and five yeses, and I had a, I had it wrong, so it's corrected now, thanks to, uh, the update there. Thank you.
And there was one more little correction, uh, Corin, in that email, just, our, we, we approved the minutes for our previous meeting, that the date should be March
Yes.
23rd instead of the 26th, or whatever it was in there. I think we had the wrong date in there, so we should change that as well.
That was done.
Thank you.
Great, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I, I'll move to approve the minutes of April 27th with the, um, uh, with the correction, uh, correction stated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, that was Commissioner Cray, who's second, and Corin, uh, may we have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Zissar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chin?
Aye.
Mayor Ostrowski?
Aye.
Five-two, or five-zero-two. Two absents.
Okay, great. Um, so, um, uh, city manager Loventhal, do we, do you have any communications for the commission this evening?
I do not have any additional communications this evening.
Great, are there any agenda modifications or postponements?
Not this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so I'll, uh, open with the gavel here. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak for up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak?
At the present time, we don't have anybody as an attendee, so.
Okay.
Other than our panel here.
Perfect, alright. So in that case, I'll close with the gavel, virtual gavel, and move to the, uh, meeting agenda. And before we start, do we have any disclosures regarding item, uh, the item on the agenda this evening? No, okay. Well, in that case, our first topic for this evening is the public hearing to consider the application PLN-2021-159 of Aaron Peleg for a site and architectural review permit to allow facade changes to an existing, uh, commercial building to accommodate a new jewelry store, Jeffrey's Diamonds, on the property located at 342 East Campbell Avenue in the C3 Central Business District, zoning district, and our planner this evening is Daniel Fama. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, good evening. Let me, uh, share my screen here. So we do have a site and architecture review permit for a property located at 342 East Campbell Avenue. Uh, this is a downtown property on Campbell Avenue located between Central Avenue and First Street within the C3 zoning district. Uh, this building had been most recently occupied by 23s Couldoo, as shown on the left side photograph. Uh, the building was left in a pretty bad state, and after some fairly extensive code enforcement efforts by the city's code enforcement officer, the city was able to compel the property owner to stucco the building to at least prevent any further deterioration of the building. In 2017, there was an application for a new restaurant attendant improvement for the House of Meatballs. However, that applicant never proceeded with the application, and the building has still remained vacant. By last year, the city received a building from an application for relocation of a downtown jewelry store. Uh, that permit was issued, uh, that did include the interior work, but unfortunately did also invariably include exterior work that normally did require planning commission approval, a site and architect's review permit. Uh, once that error was brought to staff's attention, uh, we did allow the applicant to continue interior work, but informed him that he would need to apply for a site and architecture review permit to be reviewed by the planning commission, uh, which is what you're doing this evening. So in terms of the exterior alterations, uh, shown in the plans and in the illustration here, uh, the applicant's proposing to remodel the building facade in a neo-classical style, uh, reframing, reframing the facade to modify the roofline, inset the door entry, expand the windows, add awnings, also add a feature to the left side where there's currently an alley to extend the wall plane and add a decorative, uh, gate. Uh, this design is spelled out in the staff report, largely does comply with the downtown design standards with regard to building mass and form, storefront, uh, design and materials and colors. Uh, therefore, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the site and architectural review permit. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. And do we have a SARC report?
Uh, yes, we reviewed it, um, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we found in keeping with the, uh, design, uh, for, for Campbell City, and in particular, um, the nearby buildings such as Flights and the Italian restaurant on the corner. Uh, we're supportive of the design, uh, thought it was very nice. Um, Commissioner Bookbinder was particularly, uh, taken by it, so, uh, yeah, in support of it.
Uh, okay, wonderful. Thank you. And, um, do we have any questions for Daniel on this item?
I, I just have one question, if it's okay. Just real quick, Daniel. I'm just not sure, uh, I saw the, on the report that, uh, some of the interior improvements were allowed to go ahead, was it, that's fine, and I have no problem, this, I have no problem with this project, but have some of the facade improvements already been done? I couldn't tell when I looked at the building.
I believe some of the existing cladding had already been removed. Uh, I believe that was at the point where we realized that the scope of work far exceeded what we had understood. But, uh, former director did inform the applicant not to proceed with any application of stucco or any further alteration, so whatever had been done at that point in time is a couple of months ago, uh, was, should have stopped.
Thank you.
I've, I have a, a couple of questions regarding the, the architectural style. So, you know, obviously it's a vast improvement over what was there, but, and I, I don't know if, Daniel, you can answer this, or whether this is a question for the architect. But, you know, the, the, and I'm not an architect, and I took, uh, Architecture 101 about 50 years ago, but, um, you know, i- in terms of it kind of being in consistent with the rest of the downtown and how it fits, the neo-classic, I know it's kind of neo-classic light, but it is a neo-classic design. It's got the ornaments and, uh, I guess, I'm not quite sure about the front facade design, but, but, you know, there isn't really any, you know, other than the bank building, there isn't any other neo-classic stuff in downtown as far as I can tell. And I, I'm just wondering, you know, we got a lot more, whatever, Spanish colonial and Mediterranean style, plus a mishmash of old buildings that I'm not sure have a style, but I'm just wondering in terms of how the decision is made to accept this kind of architectural style, cause it seems to be like, out of, it's, it's, it's out of whack in terms of what the rest of downtown styles look like and, and would fit, and I'm, I'm, I know this is a small storefront, and just one little small storefront, but I'm thinking in terms of future, uh, there are other storefronts, including a couple right next door, that if they were to have facade changes, whether or not, you know, they'd want to match up, and so it seems like a, a lot more longer-term question in terms of what we, we, we'd, we'd end up with and whether neo-classical is a good thing to have.
Sure, so the guidelines really speak to kind of two different sides of this. On one hand, you want to maintain an appropriate scale for the pedestrian environment, and so this building effectively does that. It does have that recessed entry that provides depth. It has a base treatment below the front windows, and two, effectively creating an attractive storefront. Now, in terms of architectural design, the standards really, I think, are trying to preclude something that's too modern. There's specific language that really discourages glass curtain walls, for instance. So if, uh, Apple wanted to open a store and make it a glass box, uh, that would probably be a pretty good example, something that was not consistent with the city's historic downtown. Now, beyond that, yes, I mean, there's a fair amount of discretion on the planning commission's side to determine what's appropriate, but classic styles, I mean, they're, they are timeless for a reason, and this is a historic downtown. So in that way, the staff determination was that it would be appropriate. Um, you know, it is interesting, an earlier version of this design was, uh, more art deco. And so the arc, the design of the business owner really liked that timeless design. But, um, yeah, I mean, there's really a lot, uh, that could be discussed by the planning commission in terms of appropriateness of any particular style. I mean, the guidelines also speak of not making anything too old-tiny. Um, you know, there's some subjectivity of what that means. And certainly from a historic preservation perspective, you don't want to create anything that's so overly mimics an historic design that you can't actually tell it's not old. And in this particular case, the use of stucco really is a clearly more modern feature that a true neo-classical building from 100 years ago, what I mean, clad in stucco, be clad in some sort of stone. So, again, there's, there's, I mean, design is subjective, and there's always areas of, of agreement and disagreements.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I know, it's, it's, it is subjective and it's merit taste, I just, you know, and, and I, I'm real, I even walked to downtown today to take another look at stuff, and it just, uh, you know, my first, my first take on it was, it's a nice new design, it, it's better than it was, but now it's like, well, is this really fitting in? And the other thing was the color, too. It's like, um, we have some grays downtown, but most of it's earth tones of various, uh, various hues, and, um, this is gray and black, and so, I don't know, uh, it's not horrible, but it wouldn't be my favorite color. Um, I, I guess my question is, if we, if we, uh, approve this tonight, it's like, it's approving the, this design, right?
Correct, but if the commission feels that there are any aspects of the design that could be improved, and color is a good example, uh, you could als, you could always incorporate a more specific condition of approval that could provide a requirement that a final color design be provided to staff, uh, for the director's approval before the building's painted.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I was muted. Is the color, um, gray and black, I kind of see tan and dark blue, so. Maybe you can, if I might, might just be showing up
Me too.
On my monitor differently.
So unfortunately, just due to the timing of this application, some of the color details that we would normally want on these plans are lacking, so we do have a condition of approval that requires the applicant to provide the final material notations prior to any application of exterior materials. So that was something that we already did incorporate that would be deferred to staff. But again, if the commission wants to provide something more specific or concrete in terms of colors, um, you can certainly incorporate that into your motion.
Okay, so the, the image, the color image on the second to the last page, that's not necessarily the, the color, because they didn't provide the color palette. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, we intended to work, um, more closely with the applicant as he got closer to finishing the design.
Okay, so, so we could, we could ask to take a look at the color before, you know, before it's, uh, before you, you finalize it, um.
Well, one option is to defer the final color palette to SARC, and we've done that before, um, in the distant past, but that is an option.
Alright, and the other thing I had was the, um, the, what, what's referred to as the, um, what do they call, uh, the ornaments?
No, yes.
Yeah, so, um, they had some examples of these different Greek ornaments, and it's like, uh, the one on the picture is a little plainer, but it, it, we don't know if that's really going to be what they, what's going to end up. The other ones are a little bit more ornate that they had examples of. I'm, I'm not big into ornate, or they're called corbels.
Yes, again, unfortunately, because of the timing of the circumstance of this application, that's another detail that, um, is being deferred to staff. But, you know, the commission can always refer that to SARC as well.
Alright.
Okay, um, those are all great points. Any other questions? Okay, and it looks like, um, the applicant is not here, is that correct, Corin?
I don't see him on the board here.
Okay, I didn't see him either. Um, okay, uh, so if there is, uh, nobody here to speak, then I will, um, open and close the public hearing um, and then open it up to the commission to discuss who would like to kick us off. Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Um, I think it's fascinating that we have such a, a wide variety of viewpoints here. Um, I was, I was actually, like, from my perspective, I feel like we don't have enough ornamentation on our buildings. Like, I suppose there's a continuum between featureless gray cubes and, you know, I'm trying to imagine what too much ornamentation would look like, but I, I feel like we're, like, from my own taste, we're a little bit more towards the featureless gray cube end of the spectrum, and we could use more, um, more ornamentation, or, or beauty, uh, downtown or anywhere else. Like, I, I, I really like the design. I, I feel like, um, I, I recognize it doesn't look like everything else downtown, but I think it's, it's good that we have sort of a diversity of, of styles. Not, if nothing is, you know, looks like it was dropped into space, like, we don't have, as, uh, Planet Famas said, we don't have, uh, an, a big glass apple cube. Um, I, I think that this design looks like, you know, it, it communicates what I think the, the proprietor of the business wants to communicate, and it's definitely an improvement over an empty kind of bland stucco building that was there before. Like, I'm, um, and I ki, I kind of like the, I think it's labeled as French white, like, I, I like the off-white color. Um, like, I, I just like this design.
Great. Thanks, Adam. And, um, you know, we always have a diversity of opinions, so it's nothing new.
I'll, I'll put my two pennies in. Um, I, I think Commissioner Zissar raises a good point. Um, and as Commissioner Bookbinder says, um, we've got quite a good range of diversity down in the High Street or the Main Street, uh, which is a good thing, right? Um, we've got everything from contemporaries to adobe's, neo-classical. Um, he raises a good point, does this type of fit. And I, I think most of us have probably taken a stroll down there and, and tried to look, look at the, the nearest fits maybe, and, um, I think the Schrader Building and the, um, Trattatoris, the Italian restaurant on the corner, are actually pretty similar. Um, so, uh, I, I feel comfortable in that respect, and, um, you know, I like contemporary, but I like, I like this one. I, I think this is, this is a good design. I wouldn't like to stall it because time's a tough right for people, and, um, personally, I wouldn't want to put the, uh, the applicant through, uh, any other process to delay them building, building this out.
I would, uh, quickly, I, I just wanted to, I, I'm sorry, I just, what, I should have asked, uh,
Go ahead, Adam, please.
How long were, um, what is the delay on the process? Like, how much later will they be able to open? Than they would have if, I guess, the city had not acknowledged that they did not notice this, or that they, if they hadn't needed a SARC review?
Luckily, from what we understand from the applicant, the delay may just be one or two weeks, since there was a lot of interior work to, uh, for him, his contractor, to keep, uh, busy, and he also indicated that a lot of the exterior materials are being imported from Europe. So we caught it early enough that it didn't result in any outlandish amount of delay.
Uh, thank you.
What, what kind of materials are being imported from Europe?
You know, he wasn't very specific on that, I'm afraid. Just a comment that he made.
The gate, okay.
Probably, probably the gate.
Okay, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Cray, you, you were gonna, um,
Yeah, yeah, just, just, you know, really quickly, I, I,
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, you know, really quickly, we all know this, that this downtown Main Street is really the jewel of Campbell, and we're so careful with it, and I think, you know, that the staff report showed that, you know, how important Main Street is. I think they did a pretty nice job of putting all this out there. You know, I actually didn't, I wasn't aware of our stipulation about trying to avoid mimicking old-timey, a false old-timey feeling. It's a good thing to avoid, I guess, but, but I like the staff report, and I, you know, our downtown is great, and I think this building was really fine, it didn't have any problems at all with the design. And I guess we're not sure about the color, so I, you know, if you wanted to be a little cautious on the colors in our, in our motion, that would be okay with me, but yeah, I thought it was a nice project, so, thank you.
Okay, great.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just, you know, put in a, you know, I'm overall very pleased with, I don't have any problems with the design of the window treatment and the doorway, and I love the gate because it's a, it's a crummy alley right now. So all that is great. I was just throwing out the architectural style thing because it's not an area that I totally understand with the thinking in terms of, you know, what kind of styles we would use in downtown, and of course, I'm, I'm as concerned as everybody to make sure we do the right thing in downtown, especially with newer facades, you know, it's like, to get it right, so the general design with the awnings and the windows and the doors and the gates, that's all great. I wouldn't want to hold it up because I think maybe I don't like Roman or Greek stuff, but, but I would, I would want us to take a look at the color thing since we don't really know what the color is. It's like, whether that's a beige or a gray, or it'd be nice to have a better handle on that, so it'd be, whatever way we can amend it to have the staff take a look at the color scheme, I'd be going, I'd go for that.
Okay, I'll just weigh in here and say I do like the design. I think it's a really nice improvement over what is there. The gate was a really clever way to add some design and kind of replace a wooden gate to, I think, what's sort of an open area where the trash is is maintained right now, and I do like the recess door and, you know, the fact that the windows pop. I think it's going to be a really inviting showcase for people walking by, and so that's, that's nice. The colors, it's unclear what the colors are, but if they're anything like what it looks like on my screen in the last page, I think they are nice, and if the, if the door actually, and the color is that kind of like bright slash darkish blue, I think that would really look nice and add some color to the street, which is kind of mainly like beige and black and that kind of thing. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the, of the project as it is, and I'm pretty neutral on the decorations up top, so I could go either way on those, but it sounds like the owner put some thought into it and and made a big, is making a big upgrade. So do we have, anybody else have any comments or would like to make a motion?
I guess I can try to motion. Let's see, how about that the Planning Commission approves a site and architectural review permit PLN 2021-59 to allow facade changes to an existing commercial building to accommodate a new jewelry store, Jeffrey's Diamonds, on property located at 342 East Campbell Avenue, subject to the attached recommended conditions of approval. And with a special, I don't know how to phrase it, with the, do we want to say, well, I'll put it in the motion with the colors to come before the SARC for approval, with final colors coming to before SARC from approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
The second, Commissioner Resister?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Polville? On my list. Commissioner?
Corinne, we didn't hear you.
Commissioner Cray?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Resister?
Aye.
Vice Chair Qing?
Aye.
Chair Ostrowski?
Aye.
That is five zero-two.
Great. All right, this item passes unanimously. The Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. And so that was the one and only item on the agenda this evening. Brian, do you have anything to report to the commission?
Thank you, Chair Ostrowski. Just wanted to mention, as in my report to the commission, on May 4, the council did approve the Pruneyard project. I know that was a big project, and the commission supported that application. That was approved unanimously by the council, and then I also wanted to point out the cancellation of your next meeting, May 25. We will be resuming. It won't be this late schedule forever, but June 8, you'll be resuming, and you will have your new community development director, Rob Eastwood, at that meeting.
Wonderful. That's very exciting. Congratulations on hiring him.
Thank you.
It'd be great to work with him.
I have a, I have a quick question. If we have questions the sort that we would normally have sent to Paul, do we send them to you in the meantime?
Correct, that'd be fine.
Like, are you the head of planning staff?
Yes, yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be glad to help you.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Yep.
All right. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and close the meeting, and everybody have a wonderful evening, and we'll see you in June then.
Well, everyone.
Bye.